Madam Mayor, we are live when you are ready.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the North Bend City Council's regular session agenda for February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two here. No, not February twenty-eighth. Thank you, Councilor Gleason. I'm February second. February eighth. Welcome. We are going to go ahead and move straight into the agenda this evening after calling the meeting to order here, February eighth. We, we do have some changes to the agenda. We are going to reschedule some of the ceremonial activities. So we'll have the stack, staff recognition for our resource officer, Dustin Parcurst, at a later point. So that brings us to number three on the agenda, which is our consent calendar. This is some information that we went over last night in our work session, and I will, unless there's any additions from our city administrator, I will look for a motion from the council.
I move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Okay, I hear a first from Councilor Gleason. I believe that was a second from Councilor Garboden, correct? Or?
Either one. Doesn't make any difference.
So we had a first and a second. Was there any discussion? All in favor, accepting the consent calendar as presented? Our city recorder here, is it best if you want a roll call vote on this, or can we just, if anybody opposes, if they say, if you're for it, remain silent, and if you oppose it, say something?
I've got everybody on my screen, so I can see if you talk, but council, if you could please unmute yourselves and give us a vocal response to each motion.
You want the, you want a vocal response from the counselors?
Yes, please.
Okay, so. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that takes us to number four on the agenda. We have some public comment this evening. And the city recorder is going to help me with reading some, and I think we might even have someone live. I do want to take a moment to say how much we do appreciate public comment, and we thank everybody for participating in our public comments. Public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Each person has three minutes to speak. This will be three minutes, no matter how many people are online, to ensure fairness and consistency for those who speak. Our governing body takes the input into consideration. However, in order to comply with Oregon Open Meeting Law, this isn't the time for dialogue, but rather a time for us to listen to you. Our city administrator and our recorder are taking notes of action if any is needed. So to our city recorder, Kaylee, I'm going to go ahead and let you take it from here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have several people that have signed up to speak this evening. Not seeing the first one on my list, Natalie Ranker. See ya.
I'm here. Good evening.
All right. Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, I'm Natalie Ranker, four one four Simpson Avenue, North Bend, nine seven four five nine.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Engelke and councilors. I'm questioning Agenda Item Ten, which is consideration for reimbursement of city administrator legal fees. I feel that it would be appropriate to give an explanation of the need for reimbursement rather than just submitting an invoice to be paid. Perhaps a citizen of North Bend, such as I, I do not have the right to ask you for an explanation. However, for a number of years, we've all been made very aware of the fact that our city must be careful in managing our resources and funding, and thus all residents have paid extra monthly towards funding our police force, and will also pay for other expenses necessary for the city to function. I do not doubt that the Item Ten legal expenses are an appropriate city expenditure, but it does not seem right for North Bend to pay over twelve thousand dollars for unexplained legal services. I would greatly appreciate a clarification of this issue, and I feel that the citizens of North Bend deserve an explanation as to how our city funds are spent. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you. Martha Gregor, let me reset the timer and. All right, go ahead. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Martha Elizabeth Gregor, and I'm at four five four Simpson Avenue in North Bend.
All right, go ahead.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I would like to address Agenda Item Ten as well. I wanted to briefly comment on the reimbursement by the city of the city administrator's legal fees totaling about twelve thousand dollars. I know the situation is complicated, and not all the details have been revealed to the public. As a taxpayer of North Bend, I would like to say that I can't help but think of better ways we could spend this money. I want to express how important it is that we have a city government that doesn't get into situations in which money is used for this kind of thing. Twelve thousand dollars may be a relatively small amount compared to our entire city budget, but it's hard not to think of the playground equipment it could buy, or the trees that could be planted, or the public events that it could support instead. That is what comes to my mind when I think about twelve thousand dollars. It seems like from the work session that this money is being spent to move past something that the council can't agree on, and I think that's an unfortunate reason to spend twelve thousand dollars. I would like our elected officials to help make sure that our city isn't in this situation again. We need to have a city government with good communication and efficient operations. Thank you again for your time today.
Thank you. Beth Chu, I see you've joined the meeting. Did you wish to speak this evening?
Yes, thank you. I, I too wanted to first address Item Ten on the agenda today about reimbursing the city administrator for his attorney fees. I'm a member of the public, and so I have no base knowledge, and I understand why it needs to be kept quiet. But at last night's work session, the mayor read this item, and it included something to the effect of this is not intended to set precedent. My point with that is this, even if it's not intended to set precedent, precedent, it still could. I believe it would be a good idea to pause this, not vote against it, but just not vote on it tonight to wait until the city council can get some legal advice specifically about it, if it would set precedent. And if there are ways you could ensure it does not by codifying something. I would also like to thank our mayor and the rest of the city council members for listening to the community when we said no to Clyde Allen Field and the community center parking lot. I know for many of you, it was a frustrating experience to have to hear about it via email, the petition, perhaps even being accosted on your daily errands. I hope that it can be recognized how essential the voice of the community was in pushing the city employees to look more into things. Without that outcry, I believe the parking lot solution might have gotten quickly voted in, and legal troubles you have now been advised about could have soon followed. With that being said, I still hope that the city plans to pursue grants, funding, and partnerships to help those experiencing homelessness in our communities. One idea I had was creating a new job of park host. I thought that it could possibly help a few people that are living in RVs in our community, and also help provide an extra set of eyes for the community's parks that have been the focus of vandalism recently. The city of Coos Bay is currently advertising for park hosts, and I think that North Bend could do the same. City employees and our police department might even have some ideas of people who are living in RVs in the streets that would be good candidates for such a position. The park host position in Coos Bay does not get a salary. They are expected to devote twenty hours a week working with visitors and helping with park maintenance in exchange for a place to park their RV and hookups. This Coos Bay position is just seasonal, but in, if we wanted to do it in North Bend, the city council could make it into whatever they'd like. I know this would not help a lot of people, but it would not make that huge impact that a lot of us want to make. But with proper background checks and applications, interviewing, a responsible park host as another set of eyes and a discouragement towards bad behavior in the park would be very helpful to park employees and to the city as a whole, and it also could make a difference for the few, for a few who are living out of their RVs but who can't find a spot, spot to park, and it would give them chance and some hope. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. We also have two comments to be read into the record. The first is from Gary Gregor, eleven eighty-five Windsor Avenue. Public comments are regarding reimbursement of Mr. Milliron. Please, please table action and reveal the previous council action that makes this a reimbursement, then provide exactly what the attorney fees were for, then ask for public comment at your next meeting. The comment is from Ken Benetti. Address is nineteen ninety-seven Oak Street. Dear council members, though I am unable to attend the February eighth council meeting, I was looking through the agenda just to see what issues the North Bend City Council is discussing at this point of time. I noticed an item on the agenda regarding reimbursement of the city administrator for twelve thousand one hundred twenty-one dollars and ninety-seven cents in legal fees. That's a lot of money. I was curious as to what the legal fees were for and found there is no information in the packet. Why should the public support reimbursement for legal fees for which there is no information about the case for which those fees were incurred? Why not provide a general description of what nature of the case, so the public understands that it's a legitimate expenditure of taxpayers' money? The details of the case need not be revealed. What if the legal fees were in regard to an employee grievance either by or against the city administrator? I did a little inquiry about the city's responsibility for covering employee legal fees and found that in accordance with the city code, if the legal fees are related to a grievance, the city is not responsible for covering legal fees of either party, only the arbitration fees. I feel that all such matters involving substantial sums of money, particularly with regard to legal fees, should be transparent and subject to public comment and debate. I'm asking the council either deny the reimbursement request or table the item to a later meeting until the public has at its disposal all the necessary information to determine whether or not the expenditure is for a legitimate purpose. Thank you for your attention and consideration. Sincerely, Ken Benetti. That concludes public comments. The council was provided with a copy of public comment this evening.
Thank you, city recorder. So this takes us to number five on the agenda, and we have a public hearing for eleven thirty-seven Windsor. The council has some information on a, in their packet on page eighty-seven, and I know you're going to walk through some information for us on this. And so Kaylee, you'll have, you have some information to go from here.
I do. I will read the script for you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
The city council is holding a public hearing regarding eleven thirty-seven Windsor municipal code violation. The city council will take public testimony on this issue and make a decision at this meeting. The hearing process will begin with a staff report by Public Works Director Ralph Dunham. Following presentation of the staff report, the city council will take public testimony. Testimony will be received by supporters of the proposal first, followed by neutral testimony, and then opponents of the proposal will testify. Directions for signing up for remote public testimony are available at www.northbendoregon.us. The council requests that all people wishing to testify have signed up by one P M. on the day of the meeting. People wishing to testify should limit testimony to not more than three minutes. Written testimony will be accepted from all authorities. After everyone wishing to testify has had an opportunity to speak, the city council will close the public hearing and inter deliberations. Once the public hearing is closed, no further testimony will be received. One moment. Are there any declarations of conflict of interest from the council?
You want each counselor to say or shake their head or?
Yes.
No.
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 Thank you.
And no conflict for me.
This hearing is now open. City staff will now present its report. Mr. Dunham?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. This was brought before you at the request with the opportunity appeal from Mr. Leif Aronson, or excuse me, Leif Nelson. Some old history there, maybe a Danish or Viking in the middle of this, but I'm sorry for that. We had contacted Mr. Nelson at eleven thirty-seven Windsor regarding operating a business, specifically a flooring company, beginning in September twenty twenty. Had intermittent complaints throughout. And finally, based on some photographic evidence from the neighbors, issued him a notice of violation, did not get a response on a cease or desist order on it, and issued him a fine. The evidence on initial discussions with Mr. Nelson was that he was actually remodeling his home. He did, by the way, actually sell flooring. There's never been any evidence that it was out of his home. We have found that out through contractors. So we were aware he was selling flooring, thus reason for potential violation of a home business rules where you can't operate that within our six, five, six, seven, or our ten zone. On each event, Mr. Nelson had reasonable reasons for it. On the final event, where we issued, we had photographs of him moving some concrete materials into vehicles, which we subsequently found out, and you have in your packet the letters stating why he was doing that. He was getting rid of his last remodeling supplies related to his remodel. Everything we have discussed with him, he has proven. Staff therefore recommended because Mr. Nelson wanted to appeal his fine, that we take it to city council and give the neighbors, both give him and the neighbors an opportunity to produce some evidence either contradictory or towards continuing with the violation. I don't see Mr. Nelson online, and I don't see anybody signed up for specific comment from his neighbors.
I do have written comment from Mr. Nelson.
Okay, beyond that, based on the evidence we have found, we recommend dismissal of the fine and the notice of violation unless other evidence is brought forward.
Right. Now is the time for public testimony. People wishing to speak are asked to come forward and state their name and mailing address and limit testimony to three minutes. We do have testimony from Mr. Nelson this evening, and there are no other constituents signed up to speak. Mr. Nelson states, to whom it may concern, "They have been previous notices advising me of the requirements of operating a business in the North Bend city limits. Those notices have been received, considered, and taken seriously, and the requisite rules and guidelines followed. There are no formal business activities taking place at one one three seven Windsor Avenue in North Bend. There is no merchandise being stored or warehoused, no shipping and receiving, and no commerce or exchange of monetary compensation for either product or services. My work hours consist of two days a week at our home office in Eugene, two days a week in the field, and part of the week spent traveling. The current allegation is more of a personal issue by a neighbor that sees fit to use the city's valuable resources of time and manpower to further his own person, personal dislike for myself, and should be, should himself be on notice for making false claims. I attend, I intend to abide by the city's rules and policies in every and all manner as they pertain to the residents of one one three seven Windsor Avenue, North Bend, Oregon, nine seven four five nine. I respectfully thank the council and city officials for handling this matter without incident." Thank you, Leif Nelson. This hearing is now closed. Is there any further council discussion?
None for me. I don't see any from any of the other counselors.
Now is the time for council to make a decision in this matter.
So it sounds like what we are hearing from Ralph Dunham is that the staff recommendation is to dismiss the case.
That is correct, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. That would be, then I would agree with that. Did the, does the council have any other questions or discussions or ways that they wanted to look at this?
Do we do that on a motion? Or it just goes away?
Would we need a motion to dismiss the case, Kaylee?
A motion for the case record would be appreciated.
Yeah, I would move that we drop the notice of violation citation and do not pursue further unless verifiable evidence of wrongdoing is found.
Okay.
Okay, I heard a first from Councilor Gleason, or I'm sorry, first from Councilor Slater, and a second, I think I caught Councilor Gall on there with a few others. And the, the first, it was to drop the notice of violation citation and not to pursue further unless verifiable evidence of wrongdoing is found. So we have first and a second. Was there any further discussion? Then all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Then the motion carries. And who's, oops. I turned off my camera. Hold on. Come back. To Kaylee Marrone, is there anything else for the public hearing? There is a hearing officially closed then.
That is it, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. That would take us, takes us to number six on the agenda, ordinance two zero five five, vehicle for hire, cert, vehicle for hire services. This is on page ninety-four of your packet. And we did have some discussion last night on this, and there's a staff recommendation to approve and adopt the ordinance as presented. And I do see our city administrator online here. Was there any further information on this, or are we just looking for then a motion and a vote?
This would be a motion and vote. This is an ordinance, so you actually have to go through the ordinance process in order to enact this, so that you don't have to have individual readings. So we can walk through that process if you'd like, but you'll take the vote so that you can read it by title only.
Okay, so we're looking right now then for a motion to read the ordinance by title only.
That is correct.
I move that we hear the, the ordinance by title only.
I hear a first. Is there a second? A first from Councilor Nordoff, and I'm not catching where the seconds come from. Counselor? Thanks, Councilor Gleason.
You're welcome.
Any further? Any further discussion? Let's see, we had a first and a second to read the ordinance by title only. Was there any further discussion? All in favor of reading the ordinance by title only, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, then. There's a next step.
At this time, your city attorney will read title only, or he'll defer to staff.
Correct. Our city attorney is online. Mark Wolf, I see you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I will go ahead and read by title only. This is ordinance two zero five five, and ordinance adding a new chapter to North Bend City Code Title Five, Business Licenses and Regulations, to set forth regulations for vehicle for hire services, and the text of N B C C five dot three five dot oh four oh, subsection four, subsection B, is amended to allow, to allow vehicle for hire services as a home business.
Okay, and I believe we would want that a sec, another motion to have the second reading be by title only.
I move the second motion for ordinance two zero five five be by title only.
Second.
Okay, I heard a first from Councilor Nordoff, that the second reading be by title only, and the second from Councilor Garboden. All in favor of the second reading of the ordinance be by title only, please say aye.
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 And I. Any opposed? The motion carries for the second reading by title only. Mr. Wolf?
Ordinance two zero five five, and ordinance adding a new chapter to North Bend City Code Title Five, Business Licenses and Regulations, to set forth regulations for vehicle for hire services, and the text of N B C C five dot three five dot oh four oh, sub four, sub B, is amended to allow vehicle for hire services as a home business.
And then to our city recorder, are you able to do a roll call vote and see how each counselor stands on the ordinance?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
I'll let you proceed then.
Counselor Garboden, how stand you?
For the ordinance.
Counselor Slater, how stand you?
For the ordinance.
Counselor Nordoff, how stand you?
For the ordinance.
Counselor Gleason, how stand you?
For the ordinance.
Counselor Gall, how stand you?
For the ordinance.
And Mayor Engelke, how stand you?
I too, and for the ordinance.
Thank you. Okay, that would take us then to number seven, which is ordinance two zero five six. So same process, correct? We need a reading, a motion for the meaning of two zero five six to be by title only?
I move we read ordinance two zero five six by title only. First reading.
Second.
I heard a first from Councilor Gleason that the ordinance be by title, read by title only, and a second from Councilor Garboden, that the first reading by, be by title only. All in favors of that process, say aye.
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 Any opposed? And no, there was no discussion. So motion carries for the first reading by title only.
All right, ordinance two zero five six, and ordinance amending sections five dot three zero dot oh six oh, and five dot three one dot oh six oh, to clarify the rules related to the standard of measurement used to establish a buffer between individual marijuana retailers and dispensaries.
Thank you. Do I have a motion for the second reading to be by title only?
Move the second reading be by title only.
Second, I heard a first from Tim Slater, but the second reading be by title only, and a second from Councilor Nordoff. Any further discussion? All in favors of the second reading be by title only, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Wolf?
Ordinance two zero five six, and ordinance amending sections five dot three zero dot oh six oh, and five dot three one dot oh six oh, to clarify the rules related to the standard of measurement. used to establish a buffer between individual marijuana retailers and dispensaries.
Okay, thank you. I think our city recorder will continue with the roll call vote. Counselor Gall, how stand you? Counselor Gall, are you able to unmute?
Oh, am I there now?
Yes.
For the ordinance.
Counselor Garboden?
For the ordinance.
Counselor Gleason?
For the ordinance.
Counselor Slater?
For the ordinance.
Counselor Nordoff?
For the ordinance.
Mayor Inglekey?
I too, and for the ordinance.
All right, thank you. Fifty-six passes six, two, zero. Great. That brings us to number eight on the agenda tonight, authorization to hire Terra Furma Inc. to stabilize Vermont Street embankment on Pony Creek Bridge. We went over this last night with our staff. There is information on page one, oh, six of your packet. And what is the will of the council? I see the staff recommendation is to authorize to hire Terra Furma Inc. to stabilize the east abutment of Vermont's bridge. Is there a motion?
I moved authorize to hire Terra Furma Inc. to stabilize the east abutment of Vermont Street Bridge.
Second. Heard a first from Counselor Gleason, a second from Counselor Nordoff. Is there any further discussion? Right, all in favor to authorize and hire Terra Furma Inc. to stabilize the east abutment of Vermont Street Bridge, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. This takes us to number nine on the, and this is some citizen board commissions and lay committee appointments. And this is where I'm going to make some appointments to the committees, and we did find out some information that we can make some other appointments throughout the year, but this is, we had the open period. It has now closed, and these will be the appointments for the evening. I can go ahead and I'm going to read them, and then after I read my appointments, then I would need a motion from the council to affirm the appointments. So ones that I have for tonight are Budget Committee, Mike Hegelblum. And I'll go through to as I'm reading this and just let you know that we do have some openings still. There's still six vacancies on the Budget Committee. Fire Committee, there's one vacancy and no applicants received. Right now, there's the Parks and Recreation Committee, and I have, see, Daniel McCarthy as appointment, Elise Hamner and Alexa Jones. There's five vacancies on that one. There's the Planning Commission, four vacancies. The appointment tonight is for Brian Gould. And we have seven vacancies on the North Bend Historic Landmark Commission. No applicants received at this point. We have the North Bend Housing Authority, three vacancies, one resident. We have Alice Conway and Kevin Owens. There is the North Bend Library Board, three vacancies. We've got one appointment this evening. See, I believe the way Mr. City Administrator on here, it says Levi Goodman. But then next to it says not eligible again in two thousand and twenty-three. But I still am making the appointment for that tonight, correct?
No, Madam Mayor, he is not able to be appointed to that committee again until two thousand and twenty-three, as he has served two consecutive terms.
I apologize. So Levi Goodman is rotating off, and that still leaves us with several openings. The Police Committee has two vacancies and no applications received. So and that is all I have on my sheet tonight for appointments. So as the public is listening, please know that we can continue to look at these down the road. Is there a motion to affirm the appointments that I have listed tonight?
I move to confirm the appointments as listed to these boards and committees.
All right, I hear a first. Yeah.
Second.
Heard a first from Counselor Nordoff, a second from Counselor Board Garbode to affirm the appointments from the mayor on the committees as listed, and was there any further discussion? All right, all in favor of affirming the appointments, please say aye.
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 Any?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, thank you. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, for all who are listening, you see lots of openings out there, so please look at our city website for more details. And then we have, so that was number ten, number, I'm sorry, that was number nine, the Citizen Board Commission and Lay Committees. Number ten is consideration for reimbursement of the city administrator legal fees. There is some note here on page one, ten of the council. I spoke a little bit last night and read a statement. What is the will of the council?
I move to table the matter to the next meeting and ask the city attorney whether or not there is a conflict within the section two point twelve Personnel Rules and Regulations, because there is a section in there that that if, if a matter, and it's a choice by the person filing a grievance or filing a personnel complaint, he or she has the option of arbitration or of a decision by the city council. So it is not the city council's decision as to how this kind of thing proceeds in general. And in this case, it was the city council's decision on the matter to, to not make any changes, not make any corrections. And it is not normal for a judge and jury to then award attorney's fees to one of the litigants. I will further point out that under our city code that had the person filing any type of personal action, in this case it was, it's a dispute and there was an investigation, had it gone to arbitration, there is a section of the city code under two point twelve point one hundred, and item three deals with the the end of appeals as it comes, and it, and here it goes to the city administrator, and then it may be appealed.
Counselor Nordoff, so your motion is to table?
Yes.
Your motion is to table, okay.
Yes.
Um. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to table this?
Well, I guess I would second that, but, and I don't know all of them numbers she was rattling off, but I do know quite a bit of the stuff that took place, and at one point in time, we were going to be advised by our attorney on on this matter, so I think that would be the thing to to wish for. So, yeah, I'll second whatever, yeah, whatever that motion was she made.
Okay, we have a we have a first on the floor to table and a second to, to table. Is there, so that we have a first and a second?
Mayor, didn't we have a presentation by our counsel or about how to possibly approach this, and we had made this, or at least we had had this discussion?
We, we have had discussions and we've had executive sessions. We do have our attorney online. I want to make sure I'm following the rules here, though. We have a first and a second. So maybe my city recorder can help me out here. If we can ask the attorney some questions at the time, or do I need to take a vote on the motion on the table, on the floor?
Discussion.
This would be discussion.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and enter a discussion period. We do have Mark Wolf, the attorney. I know our counselor mentioned arbitration. This, this isn't about arbitration, though.
I believe that I'm allowed.
Counselor Nordoff, I'm going to let the lawyer speak. Mark Wolf, please.
Yeah, so thank you. So there, there is an arbitration provision that Counselor Nordoff cited to, and that, that provision states, I don't have it exact wording in front of me, but that the city shall, shall pay any arbitration fees should some dispute end up in arbitration, and that each side would pay their cost of representation. This situation never got to arbitration. That, that provision is not applicable.
Thank you. Counselor Gall, does that answer your question?
Well, yeah, and I, I didn't, when she was talking about arbitration and stuff, you know, I was in on it. I, I honestly think that the way this played out and the ruling that we made was the right decision. I think there's no way that, that it should have played out the way it did, but the only thing I'm worried about is, and maybe Gleason's right, and, and I missed Mr. Wolf giving us a presentation, but I know when his assistant gave us a presentation, she kind of warned us of, of, you know, doing the wrong thing. So you know, I, I worked seven days a week, eleven hours a day. I could have very well missed what you're talking about, but, and if I did, I'm wrong, but that's, that's what I'm, I'm just wary that we're granted, I think, I think he's worthy of it, trust me. I think this was a really, really bad thing, the way it played out, but I, I want to make sure we're doing the right thing.
Thank you.
All right, any further discussion? Now you're, now is your time, counselors, if you have any more questions. So we had, we have a first and a second. I'm going to go ahead and call the question. All in favor for tabling a number ten agenda item, please say aye.
Aye.
So we have so Counsel, Counselor Nordoff and Counselor Gall said aye to table it?
Aye.
And Counselor Garbode said aye to table it? So that would, so I'm going to have our city recorder help us out with counting there.
So as, to table the motion, I have voting in the affirmative, Counselor Garbode, Counselor Gall, and Counselor Nordoff. Is that correct?
Yes. And if we, and then we have, then we have left to vote. It would be, we have Counselor Slater, myself, and Counselor Gleason on. And then, so any opposed to tabling it? Please say nay.
Aye.
And I would be opposed to table it, so that is a three, three. Maybe my city attorney can help us out here in this case.
You only have the six.
Yeah, we are missing a counselor tonight.
All right, let me dig into the council rules.
It's a failure.
I believe to postpone a motion, you need a majority of the council, and a three, three tie would not be a majority of the council.
Okay, and so then we can go ahead, then we'll table it for now, and best way to proceed is probably to speak with you, our city attorney.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I believe that to postpone an item, we would need a majority of the council.
So it failed, is what you're saying, yes?
Well, if the post if the postponement failed, where do we go from here?
Yeah, because any other motion will fail the same way.
Well, give it a whirl there, Tim.
If I, if I, if I understand the attorney correctly, so we had three counselors to table, three counselors to continue on. You're saying, if I understand you correctly, is that it would that the motion failed to table it?
Yeah, I'm still reading the rules here, Mayor, so give me a moment.
Because I can always entertain another motion.
Yeah, so the motion to postpone, I believe, has failed, so you could entertain another motion.
Okay, so I'll I will entertain another motion from the counselors.
Well, could I ask the attorney a question?
Yes, yes, please, Counselor Slater.
Let's assume the next motion hits three and three. So then what status are we in at that point?
Man, I'm confirmed, I'm trying to confirm that here, but I believe a three, three would, would, would be a failed motion.
That's right. So we're, we're just stuck there with, with the, with the agenda item with no, no direction or conclusion.
Tim, why don't you go ahead and throw a motion out?
Say it again, Counselor Garbode.
I said, go ahead and have Counselor Slater throw a motion out.
No, you do it.
Well, let, let me just give you one that's probably a little surprising, but I think to sit here with three and three is somewhat ridiculous, and we do need to come to an a understanding what the, the process and the focus ought to be. So, you know, what the hell was it? I'll, I'll, I'll provide a motion that we postponed to the next meeting.
Okay, I hear a, so I hear a new motion on the table from Counselor Slater to, to, I hear a new motion on the table from Counselor Slater to propose, like, the words aren't working for me tonight, I apologize. There's a motion to, to postpone number ten. I hear a first from Counselor Slater.
Second.
And a count, and a second, and a, I heard a first from Counselor Slater and a second from Counselor Nordoff. Is there any further discussion?
What difference is that from the first, from the first motion?
Well, it isn't any at all, Pat, but
yeah.
The, the issue of sitting here with three and three, and neither can progress, we need to make some definite direction, and at least this continues the discussion. We can pick it up the very next time, and maybe solve some of the concerns in between now and then.
I mean, we don't know for a fact that it would not progress, but, yeah.
I mean, we don't know for a fact that it would not progress, but yeah. I understand.
And the facts won't change.
Yes.
Right, they haven't so far.
Yeah, let Gleason make a motion.
I was going to, but he beat me. He went with it.
Okay, so I have, we have a first on the table and a second to postpone again. I'm going to go ahead and call the question. Kayla, you can help me with a roll call here. Or if everybody can say aye, all those in favor of postponing number 10, please say aye.
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 So we're talking about postponing item number 10, and I have Counselor Nordoff and Counselor Slater said aye. Who is opposed?
Me.
Nay. Nay.
Counselor Gleason, Counselor Garboden, Counselor Gall, and I am opposed to postponing number 10.
Can I just make a motion now?
Yes, please.
Yes.
I move, we approve the reimbursement of the legal fees.
Okay, I hear a first from Counselor Gleason. Is there a second? I hear a first from Counselor Gleason, I believe that was a second from Counselor Slater.
Yep.
To approve the reimbursement of legal fees for the city administrative legal fees. I heard a first and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, there's discussion. I'm going to start my timer.
Okay, I will have our, maybe our city recorder can also help with the timer.
All right, so grievances, grievances are the only section of the city code where you have investigations. You have people in opposition and you, and you go into an investigative stance. That's the only thing under administrations and personnel section, chapter two of the city code. You get down to 2.12.100 employee grievances. And there, basically, there are ways to put in a grievance. It's investigated. There are decisions mostly by the city. It can go up from the supervisor up to the city administrator. And then if there's an appeal upon like salary or demotion or anything like that, a person can appeal. And they have a choice, appealing to city council or appealing to an arbitrator. Now, in this case, the city administrator was directly involved. And our city attorney took it to the city council. There was an investigation. It came to the city council, and there was a decision, basically, to take no action. However, I think that it would be extremely rare uh, to find any, anybody that sits as a judge and a jury on a formal investigation by high-ranking city officials for that judge and that jury to award attorney's fees. That to me, and the statement by the mayor that, oh, no, this doesn't set precedent. You're darn well, it does set precedent. I think that is absolutely outrageous to say it doesn't set precedent. It does. And not only that, it's a deterrent for other people ever contemplating a formal grievance. Because it's pretty clear where the, the allegiance of the city council lies. Without getting into any details, I think, I think it is unethical. I think it is cronyism and possibly venturing over into corruption. I don't like to say that. I don't say that easily. But this, this is not good, and I think if council votes in favor of this, they have crossed a pretty big line. You are the judge and the jury, and judges and juries do not make monetary awards to either, any, any, any litigant that comes before them. That's unethical on its face. You need to think about that, because this does set precedent.
Okay, can I speak, mayor?
Yes, please. Thank you, Counselor Gall, and then.
Okay, once again, I think the, the, the situation that happened to, to Mr., the city administrator was wrongful, and I said, I, I think it, it hurt the whole city. Uh, and I just want to make sure that we are doing things the right way. I, I just worry that if we start paying attorney fees instead of, you know, God, we can, you know, we, we can compensate him some other way, maybe. I don't know. I, I can't hardly wait until Yellowstone starts making the fifth season so that we're not the most-watched TV show on, in Hoots County. So, uh, anyway, I just think it was wrong the way it happened, but I don't know that this way is right. So, uh, okay, that's, that's all I got.
Thank you, Counselor Gall. Any other counselor want to speak? We do have, okay, was there, did I have, I have not heard from Counselor Gleason, Counselor Garboden, Counselor Slater?
Yeah, I'm just ready for a vote.
Okay, I do have our city attorney online here, and I think we've been now called corrupt by a city counselor. Um, and I don't know if the attorney wants to address that, because I don't think that is a very good thing to be, being said that we are entering into corruption. That feels like an accusation of some sort. So I think we need to make sure we have our city attorney online here and maybe make a comment that, that this, the city does have the ability to make the decision that we're not doing anything wrong. I can also, really quick, I'll reread the statement that I read last night, and that, um, you know, we were, we were, last night was the time to discuss the legal fees resulting from the personnel investigation with Mr. Milliron. And, um, there was no council consensus that any claims were founded, nor any direction from the council to move forward with any corrective action. And as such, this matter was effectively closed following the council's review. The council, you know, we are not able to discuss the specifics or the merits of the findings of the complaint or investigation, nor, nor any discussions that we've had in executive session. But, um, we can state that the council did review the underlying reports and investigation as well, as heard from Mr. Milliron and his attorney, and the consensus of the council was to place the item on tonight for a vote. Um, I did mention that this is a unique situation and isolated to the single event and not to set precedent. Reimbursement of the fees would be a way to move past this and move the city forward to a positive direction. Again, we're unable to discuss further details due to the nature of this being a personnel matter. Um, and that was the statement that I read last night. But since, you know, Mark Wolf, our attorney, we have a counselor here saying that lightly accusing us of corruption. Um, I would like you to speak that this is something that the city has the ability to do, unless I'm hearing wrong.
Yeah, thank you, mayor. So, so yeah, the, the city does have the ability to, to, to spend this money. It's a, it's a policy decision which, which falls within the council. I guess I'd also point out that city code section 2.12.100 employee grievances defines the term employee, and it excludes employees in any office or position created under the charter. And so the, the city manager would not fall under that provision. Anyway, that, that, that's not where this investigation, at least from my review, fell anyway. But, but that, that code provision is, is, the city manager is excluded from that provision. Uh, if that helps provide some clarity to the council.
Thank you. Yes, it does.
May I comment, please?
Yes.
The person bringing the grievance was a city employee.
Well.
It doesn't, I don't think it, it applies that the city administrator is not an employee, that he's contractual. The person.
Mr. Wolf, is that an executive session privilege?
I can, I can, I guess, speak generally that, or at least I can maybe refer to the code here and maybe help address that. So, so a grievance would be, um, for example, a staff employee was suspended or demoted for some sort of, uh, you know, misconduct. And that person would, would have been suspended or demoted typically by their, their department head. And then that employee would be able to grieve that decision through this grievance process, ultimately going in front of the council or arbitration. So again, I don't believe that that's where, that's where this process led.
I, I, I don't think that that's correct, but.
Well, we've got the lawyer here, um, giving us the information. So I'm going to go ahead and call the question. All in favor of consideration for reimbursement of city attorney fees? We had a first, I believe.
Yes.
And a second. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Aye.
We have, I believe, is that Counselor Nordoff and Counselor Gall opposed? Okay. So city recorder, you can help me out there. That was four, two.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
All right, motion carries. All right, then, number 11 is authorization of action of any resulting in the executive sessions. Did we, Mr. Milliron, did we have any action?
No, Madam Mayor, the council did not have any action resulting from executive session.
Thank you. And number 12 on the agenda is the city administrators' report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. A couple highlights. Um, the city has kicked off its fiscal year 23 budget development process, so that's now underway. Uh, the council previously adopted a budget calendar, uh, so we'll be following that calendar accordingly. Um, with respect to the fire truck, the fire truck fire engine has been ordered. Uh, we have been advised that production should be in December and completed completion sometime about February 2023. Uh, we're currently recruiting for a library assistant, two, a main street manager, a park suit maintenance worker, one, and a lateral or entry-level police officer. So folks watching this, feel free to go to our website. Um, and, uh, that's northbinoregon.us where we have those positions posted. Um, we have recently issued a conditional job offer to a new employee. This would be a police records clerk, police records specialist, one. Uh, in the library, I will let you know that we are working with State Representative Boomer Wright. Uh, we have submitted on behalf of the library, a 2022 legislative session capital construction and Christmas tree request. Uh, yes, it's after Christmas, but this is for potential leftover funds, usually in a two-year cycle. And so we are seeking $750,000 towards capital, uh, projects uh, on the upgrade and expansion of the library that was previously approved. Um, regarding the Main Street program, uh, we, the Main Street program, I mentioned, we do have the manager position open, uh, but we are moving forward. Uh, the Main Street has, Oregon has a Main Street revitalization grant. We're working with the Liberty Theater on that, on an exciting, uh, piece, and we think it's the ideal grant. Uh, it's up to $200,000 towards a project. Um, this particular project is not that much, and it will involve no city funds. Um, CCD Business Development Corporation is working with, excuse me, is working with us and Liberty Theater and will actually be the grant administrator and the grant writer for us. So that's moving forward. Um, also, I want to highlight, I sent the notice to the council. Um, but we're in a situation where, um, the pandemic, the staff, the employee shortage, the supply chain, supply chain shortage is greatly affecting us. Um, we had absolutely no companies bid on our phase one infrastructure projects for the pool. Um, Steph's going to regroup, repost, and work the phones to encourage participation. Uh, meanwhile, our phase two projects are moving forward and are going out to competitive bid. Um, and we think that most of those phase two will be done locally. Um, unfortunately, this just further complicates things and delays, uh, that project. Uh, but we're doing the best we can in the parameters that we have available. Um, the Parks Department teamed up with the Streets Department and did some really nice work out at Simpson Park. Um, expanded the parking lot. Um, I will tell you that, um, the last two weekends that park has been heavily used. Uh, we've had great weather. It gives better access to the playground. And, um, they're actually going to do a little bit more upgrades, I believe, in the next week, so, um, check that out. Um, and then on Saturday, the North Bend Police Officers Association hosted a retirement party for decorated veteran law enforcement officer Detective Sergeant Buddy Young. His last day will be the end of the month. Um, there is a video posted on our social media and also on our website from that. And, um, I, I will tell you, it doesn't really do justice to painting the, the 44 years of service and things that, uh, he has done in our community. And so the council will have an opportunity to formally recognize him at the first meeting in March. So I did want to give that a highlight. And then, um, if you will, I, I'm going to share my screen. Um, uh, as soon as the host gives me permission to, Madam Host, will you give me permission? And then some magic wand comes, and next thing I know, I can share my screen. Excellent. Um, and last but not least, I want to, for the Main Street program, I told you it's up and running. I want to share with everyone the Fall in Love with North Bend. This is an event that will be on Saturday, February 12th. Um, shop your local businesses. All these businesses have come together. Each business will be distributing blue participation tickets. So when you go in, uh, you get participation tickets. And then, um, if you purchase $25 or more, you get red tickets, and there are some amazing drawings. Um, uh, so the gift baskets, drawings will be done at 3 o'clock at the, um, Apothecary downtown. And so I'm encouraging all of North Bend, don't wait, don't procrastinate. Uh, Robin over at Pedal the Metal Florist tells me, if you wait to Valentine's Day, you will not have flowers. Um, there is a national shortage of deliveries, drivers, supply, everything. And unfortunately, it's affecting roses. So for those, uh, gentlemen that won't watch the Super Bowl on Sunday and get caught short on Valentine's Day without flowers, not a good thing, but Robin's available to help you now. So Fall in Love with North Bend, Saturday, February 12th, over $500 in gift baskets. So back to you, Madam Mayor. That concludes my city administrators' report.
Thank you. We always appreciate those and know that you also send them out, put them online and available in lots of different formats. Um, all right, was there any committee reports this evening? Don't believe so. And so just another note to the public, because we were reading through that, lots of openings on committees. So please look at our website and sign up for some of those. Council comments. Let's go ahead and start with Counselor Gleason. For council comments tonight.
I don't have any riveting statements at this point. So I'm gonna just kind of go Garboden.
All right, Counselor Slater, do you have any comments?
Boom, there we go. Yeah, just a couple here that, first of all, you know, in the last 14 years, we've had the 3A basketball finals in our area, and they've been treated well, taken care of well. Uh, they've sort of bounced back and forth as to, uh, how many teams and what's going to go on. Uh, at this point, the 3A tournament will be the first week of March, and it'll have 16 teams. And I guess because y'all have done great things. And it'll have sixteen teams, and I guess because y'all have done great things like Counselor Ball and. So forth going on, that we'll actually have the next week, the four A basketball tournament with sixteen more teams. So there's gonna be a lot of, a lot of visitors around those first two weeks of March. From Coos Health and Wellness, I want to say I have a whole series of these self-test at-home COVID nineteen pieces. To hand out, if anybody would like them that way, or their particular businesses, I've got a criteria for the businesses. Come on down to the chamber office and we'll set you up as long as our supply lasts. And last little bit, as we're talking about Valentine's Day, my lovely wife and I will celebrate our fortieth anniversary. On Valentine's Day is coming up.
Congratulations, okay, let's see, Counselor Nordoff, do you have any council comments?
Buddy Young's retirement party was really, really fun, and his whole family came in, and. He's pretty awesome, and it'll be a loss to the city, so that's all.
Counselor Garbonin, I see that you're off mute, does that mean you have anything you want to add?
No, I just forgot to mute again.
And then we have Counselor Ball.
Yeah, I'll just, thanks, Tim, for giving the hoot to the three and four A basketball tournaments. We have sponsored it, me and my wife and the Herbalife family have sponsored a team for, oh, I think since the three A tournament got here. And we have met, we have coaches call us in the offseason, we have met some, of course, we treat them really well. We wine and dine them, we do everything, open the locker room at the gym for them, give them towels, you know. Everything about basketball except for me bouncing the ball, I guess, but it is a, it is a great deal for the economy in the. In the area, yeah, it's very good, and also I wanna comment on the town hall thing. I think as a whole, people were real respective to us, I think. And kept their comments fairly good, and I think rightfully so. I think they were able to voice their opinions and, you know, some of them were right. So I think that's how it was supposed to work, and now we've just gotta take the ball and run with it tomorrow. So anyway, that's really all I got.
Thank you, thank you. Did I get all the counselors, not missing anyone? Okay, well, I will also just add congratulations to Officer Sergeant Buddy Young. Amazing to hear all the stories from the people who came to his retirement, so he's gonna be greatly missed, but at forty-three years. Of service to the city, it's well deserved, so other things that I wanted to mention, I appreciate the town hall. I know that. That each counselor is, you know, we are taking what we're looking at very seriously and myself. And this is still continuing a process, so I love seeing the engagement from everyone, I'd love to get that kind of engagement on the committees too. So if we could get everybody that's watching and engaged to see all the openings, that would be fantastic, but we got some new information this week, of course. During the town hall, or I'm sorry, during the work session, and so hopefully you're sharing that out and people can hear where we're at with that. And that's really all that I had tonight. Was there, I know there was some other business that we talked about as far as creating, having our lawyer back, bring back some information about prohibiting drinking during a council meeting. Was that something that we were going to talk about tonight or add on at a later point?
It would be added on at later point, the council gave the consensus to have your city attorney work that language out. Because it will be an update to the ordinance, it'll have a set process, so it should be on your next agenda, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you, alright, well, that is all that I have this meeting, and I will go ahead and adjourn tonight's meeting, thank you.